Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to March 15, 2022 Blue Ribbon Special, uh, Blue Ribbon Pension Review Committee Executive Special Meeting to upload the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community. City Council, as well as Board and Commission Meetings, will continue to be close to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T Ubers, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high definition on the city's website, glendaleca.gov/live, or youtube.com/mikeglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire Devices using free app called StreamViv and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. Now, I'm going to conduct a roll call. Committee Member Amirian?
Present.
Committee Member Bain?
Present.
Committee Member Michaels?
Present.
Committee Member Milano?
Here.
Committee Member Finch?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Item Number One, Regular Business Agenda. One A, the agenda for the March 15, 2022 Blue Ribbon Pension Review Executive Committee Special Meeting was posted on March 14, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item Number Two, Minutes, Two A, Approval of the Minutes from December 13, 2021 Executive Committee Meeting.
Do we have a motion?
Hello? I'm sorry. I've, um, I, I was busy writing. Could you please repeat your, uh, the, the motion?
It's the minutes.
What was it suggested?
The minutes.
Well, the minutes. Yeah, I have a problem with the minutes. So whenever you're ready, um, Mr. Holzman, I'll let you speak on this.
Sure. Hang on one second. Luke disappeared here. Are you all? Oh, you got it. Oh, shoot. Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. All right. Yes.
Um, yeah, Mr. Holzman and members of the committee, I think that these minutes are, um, have been summarized way too extreme in such that many relevant issues that were presented on December the 13th need to be covered. Um, I have a bit of an advantage here because I have paid to have the transcripts made of the committee, and we have practically two hours of pretty extensive things. And I like to, and I think there are too many, but I'd like to suggest there's a couple of things that will help to have the staff consider redoing the minutes, uh, and looking at the transcripts as a base from which to update them. Let me give you just an example. I'm going to paraphrase some of these. Um, Mr. Holzman, on that meeting of December the 13th, uh, was indicating that we probably need five more meetings, for example, and two sessions talking about the CalPERS changes, um, and discussing the possibility of going into February, uh, and discuss preliminary conclusions. Uh, Mr. Amerian suggested, um, that we're kind of running out of topics to discuss, uh, and that there's an impression that we are petering out and kind of coming to a close. Ms. Finch, um, discussed a topic having to do with the impact on city operations, having to do with the long-term liabilities. Um, I stated that a number of meetings to extend them was discussed during the city council sessions to extend it into April. Um, Mr. Michael suggested that we discuss the idea of the MOUs being, uh, behind closed doors or secretive and so on. Anyway, there are just several items that are relevant to our discussions, um, and I would like for the city staff to reconsider updating the minutes to include the highlights of many of the topics that I just presented.
Well, can I suggest, uh, maybe a, another approach? Since these are apparently verbatim, uh, this is apparently a verbatim transcript, um, why don't we just agree to attach the verbatim transcript to the minutes and call it a day? Uh, I'm, I'm conscious of, you know, um, uh, economic cost for, 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 for the city, uh, and we have, we still have to write the report, et cetera. And I mean, obviously, there's nothing more complete than the transcript.
Um, well, attaching the transcript would be a help, extrapolating just a few key ideas from each of the members' objectives. So I have, uh, I've taken the effort to extrapolate a few things that I felt were important from each one of the members, from Mr. Bain, from Mr. Michaels, from Ms. Finch, um, and from Mr. Amerian. The, uh, it would allow us to refocus on, um, the scope that we need to move forward with regard to how to go about creating a document, uh, that is a little bit more comprehensive and gives the, uh, the city council a proper way of evaluating the options they will have. So, um, yeah, it may be a shortcut to just attach it, but I, I think that people will go primarily to the minutes to see what were the highlights of the topics, and these minutes are, uh, just insufficient to address the many topics that were presented that were material.
Other views on?
I would be perfectly happy to just attach the transcript.
Yeah, I, I second that. Um, yeah.
Attaching the transcript or referencing the video, my understanding, at least with city meetings being recorded, the video is the ultimate definitive version of the minutes, and any text minutes is just abbreviation to refresh mainly the members on the body. So I'm, with the review of this, I'm comfortable with abbreviated minutes and moving forward.
Yeah, agreed. And, and, and also, you know, uh, it's just, we'd be taking also the, the accuracy of the transcript on good faith, obviously. Um, but I, I agree with Mr. Michaels. The, the recording of the actual meeting itself is the primary, uh, record of the meeting. So anybody can go to that and watch that, and, uh, and they'll be able to do that without having, you know, a member extrapolating their thoughts of what, you know, people's main ideas were. Um, so I'd be open, I'd be open, uh, to assuming good faith and attaching that transcript, but, uh, I think the minutes are sufficient as they have been submitted.
Yeah, just add a link to the video would take care of that.
Yeah, um, I may want to add the following perception on this, uh, for everyone to consider. Um, as I have gone back through, look at various videos to try to identify or pinpoint a particular opinion, um, or comment, it's very tedious to go through a, for a whole video of two hours and try to locate that one minute area. They, um, the transcript is timestamped, so, and it is much easier to do a search on text, um, that would allow you to say, okay, this particular suggestion was, was made, um, at this particular point in the video, and then you can always go back to the video. It's just, it's a much easier way of identifying it. Um, and you don't have to adapt my extrapolation on it. This is actually for the person who's writing the minutes to reconsider highlighting some items that I felt were, in my opinion, needed to be presented.
So, so let me propose, let me propose a, a quick compromise because I'd like to move off of this, um, which is, we will attach the minutes, but at the top of the minutes, we'll say minutes, uh, or not minutes, uh, we'll attach the transcript as submitted, uh, by Member Milano, uh, with a little note saying, you know, the, the only, essentially the only official record of the meeting is, is the, the recording. So if there's any deviation reporting would, would, would control over, over the, uh, and that way we'd be done with this. Can I get a motion on that?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll move it. Since I was the one who objected to it, I'll move it as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Well, I guess we have to do it roll call. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and would you, would you read out the actual motion just so that I'm clear on what I'm voting on?
So the, the motion would be, uh, that we adopt the minutes, uh, uh, that we attach as Exhibit A to the, uh, minutes, uh, the document, the transcript prepared by Mr. Milano, the, uh, that document will be labeled transcript prepared by Mr., uh, by Member Milano, uh, uh, you know, asterisk, uh, the official record of the meeting is the recording. Uh, not very elegant, but.
Thank you.
Are you including Mr. Milano's, um, abbreviated summary as part of that?
No.
Or just the transcript?
It's the transcript.
Okay.
Cover that. Committee Member Amirian?
Yes.
Committee Member Bain?
Yes.
Committee Member Michaels?
Yes.
Committee Member Milano?
Yes.
Committee Member Finch?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, Item Number Three, Business Items. Three A, Preparation of Report to City Council.
Okay, uh, good afternoon. So, um, really, uh, we have, uh, two things. The, the first two items are really together. It's the preparation of the report and, and, and what are the recommendations? It's really the recommendations that I'm interested in as opposed to the report, although obviously, uh, happy, then we're going to probably have to talk about timing. What I'd like to do is focus in on recommendations, uh, a little bit. I know that comes, seems as a shock. Now, to be clear, the role of the XCOM, we've all agreed on this, is that the XCOM, um, is, um, is not, is not the decider, so to speak, uh, on, on what's going to go in the report. That would be the, the full committee itself. Uh, but I think that you guys, and, and, and please feel free to shape this meeting however you want, because it's your opportunity to tell me what to do, not vice versa. But, um, but what I'd love to come out of this meeting with, uh, is an outline of, uh, you know, the recommendations that at least we could submit to, uh, you know, for discussion to, uh, to the committee.
Mr. Holzman?
Yes.
Did you receive any feedback from, uh, the request at the end of our last meeting for people to write you in if they had any thoughts, uh, or perspective?
Mr. Milano responded, uh, but otherwise, no.
Yeah, so one of the issues I think, uh, you know, that I've kind of spoken about is hearing from the rest of the committee members, and, uh, you know, there, obviously there's still some time until our next meeting, but I think creating a, a structured opportunity for each member to, uh, briefly give their thoughts and opinions would help the, the committee as a whole then vote, um, on what they think should go into the final report and, you know, help build a consensus, consensus from there. You know, I, I have my own ideas based upon what I've heard and participating in these meetings, uh, and I've, I have an inkling of where different committee members sit, but there are, there are some committee members who I simply haven't heard from, and I don't know if that's because they, um, haven't had the opportunity, they haven't been invited, you know, uh, you know, this, this is a, this is a different committee than, than, you know, some of the smaller committees that I've had the, um, uh, privilege and pleasure to serve on. Uh, you know, w- we do have some members who may have not served on these types of committees before, and so, uh, you know, offering them an opportunity, you know, be it three minutes or five minutes apiece, and they're prerogative if they'd like to use it in order to give their opinions, I think in a public, public setting uninterrupted would be something that would help the rest of the committee have an idea of what they, they, they think the consensus might be in terms of what goes into the report.
Mr. Holzman? I think that's an excellent idea.
Uh, let me, let me turn to Mr. Bain, and then we'll devote Mr. Milano.
I, I just want to agree. I think that's an excellent idea. I think there's committee members we haven't heard from. Um, and I would be interested if they are not participating because they feel too influenced by some speakers, or whether they, you know, don't have a particular position. And I think it would be good, to the extent that you can encourage people to send in something to you in advance, I think that would be even better to get some of the ideas. I'm negligent in not having sent you something, um, with some of my thoughts on it. Uh, but I think that that would be helpful if we had a compiled list before the meeting, just to have various stakeholders' views on possibilities that others may not have even considered.
Okay, uh, Mr. Milano and then Mr. Michaels.
I, I'm in concurrence with Mr. Amerian, um, and Mr. Bain. I've, um, it is important for us to get a perception of how these other committee members have been able to get a sense of all of the issues, especially after the meetings that we've had this year. Um, it really would be very, very interesting to me how, uh, the representatives of the various city associations feel about where we are, given the situation as to why are we here, and, uh, what is the impact that it has on the city that they are serving, and what are the options going forward as they see it. Um, very, very important, and I fully concur with that idea. Um, I'm suggesting now that we maybe help out with a little bit of a framework as to, you know, uh, what kind of top-level questions would be important for us to hear from them, uh, so that everyone is, um, given us a similar structure to their response. Anyway, that's my input on it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Michaels?
I do agree with the previous speakers and want to emphasize that framework. When I spoke with you last week, I didn't give you my specific feedback on any one issue, but I wanted to discuss that framework and whether we have a time for each committee member to try and summarize their thoughts, or I was looking towards that report as a way to take issues item by item and see if there's a general consensus of which direction to go on a specific item, just to find a bit of efficiency in giving that feedback. Um, not wanting to take any one particular issue in this meeting, but if we were to look at the decision to get out of CalPERS or stay in CalPERS, that seems to be a very clear direction. And where I'd like to see a bit of structure is to have a consensus of the committee of which direction the committee thinks is appropriate, and then focus the direction that way, rather than like a large general discussion where we continue to rehash the same issues repeatedly.
So I, I, I think, you know, I think there is a menu, which is your framework, right? Um, um, that is pretty easily doable. Um, what I want to make sure of is that the menu is, is, and I think this is something the executive committee can help with, um, that is complete. And I, I would agree that, you know, the, the opening item on the menu is really, you know, do we drop a nuclear bomb? And then they work their way down sort of from there, uh, on CalPERS, that is. Uh, and, uh, um, and, and so I think that's right. I'm going to have a pretty good list, uh, you know, uh, there are, we know, I mean, maybe I should rattle some of these off, just, 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 um, for fun. Um, you know, so there's the issue, obviously, of, um, uh, which, which, you know, of course, I'm hoping we can focus on at least partially, uh, various means of accelerating, uh, uh, contributions either to CalPERS or 115, and, and funding policies, et cetera, that I think are, that pertain, uh, to those. Uh, there, um, is, um, there have been a number of suggestions, uh, about essentially labor transparency measures. There's, uh, CalPERS audit obviously came up, although I think most people think that's a little bit adjacent. Um, the, uh, I mean, those are some examples, and then obviously there are, uh, things that we can do that are, are less local, uh, that are more, more broad in terms of, you know, so CalPERS transparency. There's labor transparency, uh, as well. Uh, just looking down my list here. Um, the... Uh, there's obviously, uh, POB. Uh, so, I mean, that's a, I'm not, by the way, that list is not my list of what I think we should do. That's simply a list of some of the items that we've talked about very specifically. Uh, Mr. Amirian?
Thank you, Mr. Holzman. Uh, you know, I think the list that you, you know, uh, kind of rattled off a couple of things on, I think if you provide, and I'm not sure how you're going to structure the report yet, or thinking about structuring the report, uh, obviously we're talking about, we're talking about what the, you know, opinions of the committee members are and coming to a consensus on what the recommendations would be to city council, which is really, I think, one of the m- major roles we're playing as the Pension Review, um, Committee. And so it might be helpful if you have a, you know, kind of an inf- informational section on all of these options as they pertain to the city of Glendale i- in, in the report. And if that's something that we can have an outline of, you know, prior to our next meeting, or, or, you know, prior to kind of making that, so that then it's clear to us what the structure of the, you know, first part of the report is going to look like in terms of laying out, here are the, here's the universe of options that have been discussed. You know, we can then, as committee members, tell you what we think should be, you know, weighted, uh, you know, paid more attention to. You know, so obviously, you know, for example, I'll just give you my opinion, I don't think there should be a lot of time spent, uh, you know, in terms of i- either the amount of, 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 of information on legislative, like, uh, you know, impacts, because that's not something that Glendale can do by itself. It should certainly be mentioned, but it, it's something that I don't think should, you know, take up too much time in the report. However, you know, what you mentioned, various means of accelerating payment of the unfunded liability, uh, you know, through, through the, you know, various options, especially, especially, you know, the, the timing of the payments, for example. You know, I think that I would, my opinion would be that is something that we should, we should focus on and discuss, and how that might impact, you know, uh, the city of Glendale. And so if we have that outline from you of what that universe looks like, then I think it's going to be easier for the committee members to go, hey, uh, I think we should focus on this option, this option, and this option. That's where my recommendations are going to lie. And, you know, the... And, you know, the informational portion of what it would look like to, you know, get out of Calpers, for example. Would be something we would spend a lot less time on, or wouldn't even be mentioned in the recommendations.
Yeah, that makes sense, and that's also why I've sort of moved up my, my thinking about the timing a little bit is, um. As I think about then, you know, begin to even play with writing the report. Um, I, it, it, I realize the obvious, which should have been obvious to me before, which is. That it will be much more helpful to get the initial guidance of the committee. About what they want the report to focus on, because you can go, and, and you, I don't need to tell you, you can go endlessly. On, uh, on almost any of these issues, uh, and so I, I, I think it would be very helpful. So I'm now thinking about, you know, using, uh, what I would think would be the next session of the full committee. I hang on a second just a while, just, just to finish, um, the, you know, to begin to frame that up. Before I disappear and start preparing a full-on draft, I think it'll be more efficient. Uh, but also, I, I, I want to be faithful, you know, I'm just, I'm just your, you know, uh, your facilitator here. I, I have my own strong views, but I want to be very careful that, that whatever we do is your views, not, not my views. You know, so, uh, and Mr. Milano.
I'd like to suggest that before we begin the process of saying, here are the solutions. That we state or restate what the problem is in summarized fashion. So I would like to know if many of the other members who have not spoken feel. If we have a problem, right? Do we have a problem, and how is it that they come about assessing that? In order to assess if we have a problem, we need to have the background information as to how. The financial situation is for Glendale first. So what would be, what is our current situation, and why are we meeting in the first place? What is the problem that we're trying to solve? Right? Is it simply the unfunded portion, or is it something more significant? Um, that is impacting the city, so, uh, what is the outcome if we do nothing?
Well, let me, let me, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with the point, uh, obviously.
So let me, let me, Mr. uh, Mr. Holtzman, uh.
Okay.
He has plenty of time to, to, to give his, uh, his, uh, opinion on, on the approach. Let me just round out my, my opinions on this one. Um, because once we find out what is the outcome if we do nothing. Then we can add a couple of more layers that are really relevant. What is the worst case scenario if we do nothing, given the current economic situation? Given the inflation rate, and given the potential losses of Calpers. And then once we add those two, we figure, oh, the worst potential situation that we have is as follows. And the impact on the city is as follows. If we do not create the, uh, the structure by which we're going to make the recommendations, then the recommendations would sit out there. Um, you know, like a leaf in the wind, not really, uh, not really attached to anything. And I think it's important for us to know what the evaluation is by staff with regard to. What are the economic implications for the city of Glendale if we just remain with the status quo? Yeah, so anyway, that's one of my recommendations. I'll stop for now, uh, but I have more to add.
So, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Bain.
I think that it is important as part of your introduction. To maybe put a few of the numbers as to what our current liabilities are and current cost is. I don't think we even have anywhere close to the information to talk about. Worst case, you know, what, what do you even, what's even a bad case look like? We don't have that information. How far, what kind of deviations in salary inflation and earnings return? We don't have anything to assess that at this point, and I don't think you're going to get that. Terribly easily or quickly. So I think we're, we're somewhat limited on talking about worst cases. I do think a little background on the cost is important.
Other, uh, other thoughts? Mr. Michaels.
I agree with all of the committee members and have been looking to try and find an appropriate balance. I do want to make sure that everyone has sufficient time, doesn't feel rushed, and has their, their opinions heard. But at the same time, I'm looking to try and see how we can more quickly get to a consensus. And as a suggestion, we've often seen at city council where staff or the city attorney. Reiterate what they've heard as far as a consensus. As a way forward, what I might do before the next meeting is have staff come back with that consensus. Of topics that they've heard that the committee thinks are important, directions or specific issues. And have that go out to the committee before the meeting, so that when each committee member has a few minutes to speak about their opinions. They have a clear framework to say, I agree with staff's opinion on this, I disagree. And that may focus a direction and let us get to some of those larger issues faster. So if we talk to Mr. Milano's points of, is there a problem? We can have staff summarize what, what they've heard from the committee of what the problem is. And let people either quickly say, I agree with the consensus, or here, here is my. I just dissent from that. And that way, we can more quickly give feedback getting to the specifics and be able to efficiently move forward.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I'm willing, absolutely, I'm, I'm assuming I'm sort of staff at this point to you. Kind of your main staff, uh, I'm certainly willing, um. I do have a, you know, a, a pretty good scorecard in my head about what I think the strengths and weaknesses of each proposal are, number one. And on the question of, of, uh, of, of what's the extent of the problem, which, I mean, any report is going to start with what's the extent of the problem. It has to, otherwise, I don't know what else we do, um, I, I'm, I'm in partial agreement with Mr. Bain. I guess what I would say i- is the following is my take on what I've seen and what I've heard. Um, which, you know, is, is that, um. There, for, that, let's put it this way, there are scenarios where all this comes out, okay. Uh, there are, however, uh, you know, uh, not far-fetched scenarios where there's significant risk. And I think that, um, you know, uh, all I got to do is look at the bu- stock market, by the way. Uh, you know, I don't, I didn't look today, but, but, you know, over the last week or two to understand, you know, that, uh, I think. You know, that particularly if Calpers doesn't make its numbers, uh, but frankly, even, even if it does make its numbers, uh. Well, if it makes its numbers, the rates will go up, but they won't, they probably won't go up catastrophically. Uh, if, if it doesn't make its numbers, which is, is, is a, you know, there's a lot of reason to think it might not make its numbers. Lot of reasons, uh, then, uh, you know, uh, then we have a significant problem. To me, the question becomes. What's, how do you mitigate that problem, right? Because when you have risk, your goal is to mitigate risk. And it, that, that risk doesn't mean it's going to happen, it means it's risk, right? And, uh, and how do you mitigate the risk? Uh, well, one way, I mean, there are a variety of ways, but the way that I am certainly personally. Uh, uh, you know, most focused on is by making sure. That we are getting ahead of the unfunded liability, uh, so it doesn't get ahead of us again. Uh, and whether, whether that means additional contributions, uh, well, it does mean additional contributions, uh, timing. Uh, policies, things like that, that, that ensure that, because the more you shrink that unfunded liability, the less volatility there is. And, and, and the rest risk, the less risk there is from the volatility that you have. So, I mean, there you have my, my, my most simplistic. Take on the thing. I think it, I think it is very important, and, and I think, uh. Um, you know, that, that is a, that the challenge of that. Uh, is fiscal discipline, and how do you enforce fiscal discipline? Uh, and I'm not to say, and, and John, I know you guys are very fiscal. As, as governments go, you're very fiscally disciplined, so I'm not, not an insult in, in any way, shape, or form, no criticism implied here. Uh, I think it's a very well-run city, but, uh, you know, uh, if you ask me what would reduce your risk. It would be, you know, when I go to labor negotiations, everybody goes in and they say, ah, well. We have three percent to give, we have four percent to give, we have whatever, and they often don't ask the question, well, how much are we giving? In a sense, through just additional contributions to pension and health before we ever set foot at the table. And, um, I think this goes to a point that Mr. Milano's been making, which has to do with transparency. Uh, that we always have this pension liability forefront in the discussions. Uh, about what we can give and when we give, what we give. Um, so, again, a little bit of a spiel on my part, I don't usually say anything about my own views, but I, I, that's sort of my. One of my, my biggest takes on the whole thing is, if you really want, I mean, you're at a point. You looked at, um, uh, John, what was the, um, name of that excellent woman who you, you guys, uh, brought?
Susan Harrow.
Thank you. I think Susan made the point pretty, I mean, she didn't make it for this purpose. But the point that she was making is, in the best case scenario, you know, you're, uh, we're at the point where we could be, you know, beating. Essentially this liability, um, and that's great if that happens, right? But remember that she was looking at numbers based on twenty-one percent last year. I would wager, if we were to put a, you know, a, a flag down right now on where the market is. We've probably gone through a good bit of that twenty-one percent gain that, that Calpers had. Uh, and so, uh, you saw from her numbers how big a difference it makes. Calpers makes its assumptions, uh, in the future years. If, if you, you could hold that twenty-one percent. And you go into next year and you get your, your, your six and three quarters, you know. You're looking at, at a liability problem that you're going to conquer in a relatively short number of years, but I don't really believe that's what's going to happen.
John?
John? Yeah.
I know that Mr. Milano's had his hand up, and I, I don't want to be rude and, and get in front of him, but I just, I, I just want to say, I think what you just described right now is essentially. The, the, the context of the final report, uh, or the structure of the final report that's going to be presented to council. So if I could just take a step back and maybe try to dumb it down for my sake a little bit. What, what, what I think I'm, I'm hearing, and, and I think everyone is saying more or less the same thing, but perhaps an approach. With, with respect to putting the, the bones of this, of this report together, is to take Mr. Milano's first point. Which was, let's, let's describe the extent of the challenge we were faced with. What are we dealing with? And then what we've essentially done is we've held individual meetings month after month. Um, where we've talked about different subjects, had subject matter experts, and each one of them. Brought forward a, a, a variety of potential solutions, some that might work, some might not, that might not, some with higher risks, some with lower risk. If we just take a look at the challenge, which we, it's easier to identify. And then take a look at every one of the things that this, this, um, committee talked about, we can very easily determine what. What the final recommendation based on those individual conversations should be. As opposed to kind of rehashing all of this over and over again.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind summarizing the pro and con points on each of the, I mean, it's very, uh, uh, frankly, they're all fresh in my mind. Uh, you know, on each of these proposals, I mean, let's look at, actually, the one that's probably the most squishy even. Um, because we only had one person on it, is, is P O B, but I think we have a pretty good understanding. That, you know, a P O B could work splendidly, could work badly. And that because interest rates are going up, the window is probably gone. Uh, you know, although, I mean, you know, subject to interest rates perhaps dropping again or something like that, but that. That, that, I mean, the recommendation from our expert, and I have no reason to disagree with it, is that unless you know that you're going to. Really have significant interest rate arbitrage. That you're, you know, that you're probably, you know, just taking a needless risk, and, and, and I, 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 I don't know. Again, I, I don't have any independent knowledge of it, but we heard pretty specifically from, uh, from our, our witness on that issue. Mr. Milano. Yeah, I think you're, might be muted.
I would like to, thank you. I'd like to bring the, the purpose of the committee, uh, or subjective today is, is how to frame the report. Um, I envision a report that if given to a brand-new council member. That they're able to assess, um, what the city is facing, what, how this came about, right? And what are their, uh, potential solutions, given the history that we've had in the past twenty years? The manner in which the decisions are made, and what information they need to go forward. In order to get the input from our committee members, we have the deficiency that not everyone comes to this. Uh, came to these committee meetings with similar backgrounds, and I think that's the ideal part about. You know, those who come here with a knowledge of economics, with a sense of how the markets work. With a knowledge of how the M L U's have been negotiated in the past, with the impact on the city, all these issues. We all come from a different perspective, so I'm going to suggest that when someone provides an opinion, like, I disagree with this. That we have an expectation that they give us the reason why they disagree, or the reasons why they agree. Not just simply as a statement, I disagree, it's, to me, it's a, it's a nonsensical and worthless. Because I want to learn, what are the reasons why you're opposed to this? That way, it allows us to evaluate, maybe we need clarification on a topic, because somebody disagrees, it may be because. They interpreted the information differently, or we need a clarification. So as a, as a form of creating the structure, when someone tells us that they disagree, I want to know the reasons why. And this allows us to anchor this to facts, or at least to the, uh, to the teniest part where we have. The projections and the probabilities, right, that are out of our control. And separate those things that are within the control of the city council, to say, okay, the city council can control this, this, and this. And these other factors are not controlled at all by either economic factors or what Calpers is going to do. And if we begin to differentiate that, we might be able to at least give a simple, a roadmap on how to structure the report.
So let me, let me see if I can play back what I'm, I think I'm hearing. Um, staff would prepare for the next meeting, a, a, a framework of, uh, frameworks maybe, uh, uh, I'm going to call it a laundry list. Uh, of, of, of options that have been discussed during the course of these, uh, uh, meetings. Uh, along with a, uh, I guess I'll call it a preliminary list of, uh. Uh, of, of pros and cons, and I mean, I, I, look, I'm, I'm not very vain. I'm happy to even make, you know, say, here's my tentative recommendation, and you guys could agree with it or disagree with it if you think that's helpful.
I think, I mean, hearing everybody's ideas, I think we're all kind of headed towards the right direction, um, to approach the group. Um, at large, and so, um, I, I think that a list of everything that we've talked about, um, would be helpful. Um, I don't know if everybody's kept one or not, and so I think that if you, if, John, if you were able to summarize that. What the pros and cons of everything that we've discussed, um, I think would probably be very helpful to the committee. Um, I think in an effort to reach everybody, um, I don't know if. You would prefer everything in writing first, and if you emailed it to us wanting a response back in writing. Or if we expected to have people respond in a meeting, I think that it's going to get to a point where we're just going to have to start to call on specific individuals. Um, and give those people time to speak without interruption, um, and so. Whether or not they agree on a topic or not, um, they may or may not have an extensive reason behind it. Um, it could just be that they just didn't like the idea, and they think that there's a different, a better one, you know, and so I think that we need to not. Um, discourage people from speaking or expect, um, an, an extensive reason behind their opinion. an, an extensive reason behind their opinion. Um, I think that we need to trust that if you have an opinion, it's your opinion and you're, and you know, um, I think that that's okay. And we need to encourage that. Um, I think that if we start setting these expectations of what people are going to do, it's going to maybe discourage them from wanting to further participate. And so, um, and we can, you know, keep it simple and just kind of keep that part of the meeting moving. Um, but I think that if, you know, going, if we go that route where, you know, you prepare the list, the pros and cons, even if you were happened to just, you know, put forth like what your recommendations or your thoughts would be, um, that would probably get a lot of that conversation out of the way. Um, and so, um, because our, our meetings tend to take up a lot of time, um, in the evenings on Mondays. And so that might help make the meeting kind of just be structured to move along. Um, but I think it would be important that when we do hear from the individual committee members, um, that we allow them the time to speak, um, without interruption and give them that respect that, um, when they're giving their opinion. Um, I agree that, you know, structuring the report that way to start with the problem, everything that we've discussed, and then kind of move forward is, is a good way to go about it. Um, because it kind of lays out everything that we've done in this committee and what we've been asked to review and discuss. Those are my thoughts. I know that, um, a couple of you have kind of laid out that same kind of, um, structured foundation to be able to hear from committee members. And I don't know if it'd be easier instead of, um, maybe emailing the group in advance. Um, so they have, you know, time to see it before. I know that sometimes the agendas are posted kind of like on a Friday before a meeting. And so if you don't check your emails on a Friday afternoon or over the weekend, you're not looking at it till Monday and it's not giving you the ability to kind of really think through everything. So if we can get that information out to our committee members, you know, sooner than later, I think that that would be helpful, that people can really start to think about, you know, where they feel on each topic. Obviously, the big one, probably the first one is, do we get out or do we stay in? I mean, that's going to drive the rest of the conversation, um, into the other options that we've discussed.
Mr. Milano? Yeah, I think you're muted again.
Um, how many of our committee members here present? I've actually gone into the repository of the documents that the city prepared for us. Just one, give me a show of hands. One? Two? Excellent. The, um, so it is my hope, Mr. Holtzman, that all of the, uh, contributions that I sent to you in writing wind up at that particular, uh, website, so that everyone will have an opportunity to get, uh, a, perhaps a, a more thorough background and additional information that I provided. Um, some of that information has to do with CalPERS performance, um, which, uh, and the, and the assessment of other individuals, professionals in the field, that may be useful. I made suggestions that we include perhaps where the city ranks in terms of finances and relative to all the other cities in California, so you can get a perspective as to where we are. Um, there are, uh, topics having to do with best practices with regard to negotiations, and that has to do with the issue of transparency. And so there are many topics that I brought up, uh, that I included and submitted to you that I hope will find their way to that repository of, of data. And that may be a good way to, uh, to start, to making sure that, or suggest that everyone take a look at it. And this way, when someone, um, has an opinion, they can reference it to say, wow, I believe this is unworkable because. And then this will, it'll allow us to, we get a sense as to, oh, wait a second, that's not what was interpreted, at least not to me, right? And maybe that will need clarification. Identifying that is a practice that I've used a lot in my consulting, you know, in my 25 years in helping companies, uh, identify what software to purchase and how to run their operations. Um, because in, in committees, there are individuals who have an opinion, but oftentimes their opinion is a, is a concern or a fear, that sometimes is unfounded because, um, they interpreted the information in a way that was not, uh, meant as they, as they interpreted. Thank you.
So, um, as far as, um, there are, uh, I think a couple, uh, Mr. Milano, I know you wrote me this 10-point, uh, thing recently that nobody has seen other than me. Uh, um, so I will, I'll make sure that gets into the database. The, um, you may want to look and see what else is in the database that you think should be. Uh, because I certainly want people to have access to whatever anybody wants to, uh, uh, make sure is in there. So I, I think, you know, my task as outlined, um, is pretty straightforward. And I think that, uh, the suggestion of having, uh, warning, first of all, warning everybody on the committee, they're going to be asked to speak. An important caveat here, uh, you know, uh, getting them this information, uh, and this outline. And then ask, then going around, I think is a great idea, especially because we do have a number, I mean, practically a majority of the committee that hasn't spoken very much. So, um, I would like to hear, uh, what, uh, what they have to say. And, uh, I, I think that's a, a pretty good, seems like a good way to proceed. I like it. And, uh, unless somebody's got anything to add to it, I think we're ready to move on, probably. Are we good with that approach? And everybody is kind of on the same page?
Uh, Mr. Holtzman?
Yes.
Uh, I generally agree with that approach. I just wanted to get an idea of what the, the end game looks like here. Uh, and so I think it might behoove us as the executive committee, and I'm not sure how many more meetings we're going to have, but it might behoove us to kind of plan out what, you know, the remaining meetings are going to look like from a process standpoint, so that we just have a general idea and that, uh, we don't have curveballs coming in, uh, potentially derailing that, that process. Because I, I do know, based upon what I've heard, both from, uh, you know, following city council regularly and, and also from staff, uh, here, is that, you know, there, there is an end date and it's coming, and there's a certain number of meetings. And so it might behoove us to have a general idea of what those meetings are going to look like. So if in the next meeting, we're going to be spending, you know, three to five minutes per committee member, that's anywhere from 45 to 75 minutes of committee members giving their opinion. You know, that's going to limit the amount of time there is for any other procedural work that might have to be done in, in regards to the report itself. And then what do the remainder of the meetings look like? Uh, you know, once the preliminary report is drafted, and there's an opportunity for the committee members to review that, you know, how are we going to give input on that? And how are we going to come to a consensus on, you know, any changes that are made? Uh, or any recommendations on, you know, tweaking language or tone or the direction we think that the, the recommendation should go?
Well, I, I think you ask a, I have, I have part of the answer, but not the other part. Uh, the, uh, uh, I, 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 I think, you know, my goal would be to have this meeting, uh, get a sense of, you know, the consensus. I don't know that we need to have, um, you know, votes or whatever. I mean, unless there's something that looks like it's, you know, very closely divided or whatever, and, you know, in which case maybe, but, but get a sense of where that's going. Uh, then let me, uh, do some drafting. And by the way, I, I want to say, I mean, my intention, once I have a good sense of direction, there are some holes, there's some small holes and pieces of information and things that we need. My intention would be, you know, to pull some of that. I'm not, I'm not going to limit myself 100% to what was said here if I'm trying to support a point that I know the committee is in favor of. The, uh, so I, I, so there are some things I know that I would want to do, some experts that I'd probably bring in to help put this together, by the way, so to be clear. Uh, the, and then you guys would look at it. The part I don't know, and I haven't really thought through, to be honest with you, is how do we get comment from the committee and, 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 and if we disagree, you know? Then we're dealing with a very fine level of detail in a very short number of meetings. Uh, and so I, I don't, I don't have an immediate answer to that, um, although I, I think it's a great question. Um, and maybe that's something, I mean, hey, if you guys have an idea, that's great. And if you don't, uh, so, uh, actually, John's got his hand raised. I'm going to give him the privilege of being, since he's the, uh, he's our, uh, main guy here on staff.
Thanks, John. So I would say that having had the pleasure of sitting through, uh, way more city council meetings than I ever thought I would, and realizing it's barely halfway through my career at this point, I think I have a pretty good, uh, explanation for how we come, uh, come about with respect to, um, getting feedback on the final report. And, and quite honestly, I think it's as simple as spending the next two meetings, pinning down what the report will look like. That final report really needs to be, um, uh, one item on the agenda with a draft copy of the report provided to the committee members well in advance. Give them the opportunity to digest it. Um, that'll have the list of the final recommendations, as you have heard from the committee members. And we'll spend that last meeting coming to a consensus on whatever the sticky points might be. Uh, and from that point forward, it's, it, it is a solid document. That's as good as it's going to get, uh, I think. So I think the next two meetings, just to kind of recap, is pinning down what the final recommendations look like. Go back, write the report, send a copy of it to the committee, have them digest it, and we'll meet one final time um, prior to going to the city council to hash out any final details that there are.
Okay with me. Sounds good. All right. We have, uh, Mr. Bain and then Mr., oh boy, Mr. Bain, uh, Mr. Michaels, and then Mr. Milano.
Yeah, um, just a comment on allowing everybody to speak at the next meeting. I would like to suggest that we allow people to speak without comments from everyone else. Just let them make their position known statements and not have the usual rebuttal to positions and everything. Just get it all on the table, and then whatever discussions need to happen after can happen after.
I think that makes sense. And that's also consistent with what I was hearing from folks. Uh, Mr. Michaels?
I'm going to agree with Bain's assessment that even if we do take the 45 minutes at three minutes, I do want to hear from all of the committee members. E- even if it just simply is, these are my concerns, this is what I agree with. But I do want to hear from all the committee members without a rebuttal and let them speak in their own words to get that on the table. So that everyone does get a sense of where the other committee members have their opinions. And so that way it doesn't get to the final report, and then those, those disagreements or those fine details are then discussed. I'm more of the rip the Band-Aid off early kind of guy. And if we get the different opinions out there, then that's something that you can work with in the final report so that we get closer. And I do agree with Mr. Taktalian that the report is never going to be as perfect and complete as we want it. But the goal is to get it as good as we can and lay out what some of the next steps would be, even if the committee is to reengage or another committee or another working form, not as missing as past.
Uh, Mr. Milano? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I concur, uh, with Mr. Bain and Mr. Michaels, um, and Mr. Amerian on this, on the approach. Um, the idea is not something that is unusual, you know, it's like greenfield brainstorming. Everybody comes on and gives their ideas and their concepts. And hopefully additional questions to say, you know, I'm unsure about this, or what is the, uh, uh, the potential for, you know, for this particular option and so forth. So on item number one, that we have, should have a whole meeting just dedicated to what the, uh, the members have to contribute, excellent. Uh, with regard to contributions, I was wondering, uh, if Mr. Taktalian can clarify for me. Do we have the ability ourselves to load information into the database, or does it have to go through your office?
Uh, technically speaking, we probably can have, um, items submitted by committee members into the, the, the folder. I don't know if that is an appropriate way to handle it. There has, there hasn't been anything that's been submitted thus far that hasn't made it into that, uh, except for the recent email that you sent to Mr. Holtzman, which we addressed earlier in this meeting.
Okay, the, uh, because the areas that are concerned specifically to me are the, are the areas, the financial state of the city. And, and I place certain questions, certain scenarios, uh, that will put it into perspective. So it is, uh, I know I'll be adding to, to the workload of the finance department. Um, and I waited till after the CAFRA was completed. Uh, but I hope that we can get answers to those questions as part of the, uh, the, the background information that we need to discuss.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, can you, when you say answers to, are you talking about the 10 issues in your email? Or, or, or just financial, I, I'm just trying to pin you down here a little bit on, on what we're, what we're asking John.
Actually, I, I've, I placed them, um, uh, not just in this document, but also in the past. I've done it several times and, uh, I've been repeating the same concept as to, what is the, uh, is the current financial situation of Glendale, given the situation with the pensions? And what is the expectation going to the future if we do nothing, right? So what's our current state of it? The second one, the second part of it is, is the, an understanding of how it is that we got here. And to me, it's important because we want to make sure that we're giving the city council the tools to be able to, for them to be able to assess, um, not to have us fall into the same predicament again. So not only are we trying to solve the current and funded liability, I go a little bit further to say, yes, given the tools to make sure that they're fully aware, right? Of how their actions will impact the city long-term and where the risks are, right? And so addressing those financial questions for me is very important. And I hope that the, uh, finance department can, can take a look at those.
But, but I, I have to say, I, I mean, I, unless anybody else is hearing a financial question i- in that statement, I'm not sure that there is a financial question to, 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 to answer, Mr. Milano. I mean, a financial question in my mind is a calculation that's made. And there is no calculation that, that I can think of that can take what you think is the city's current financial situation and what, and try to sort of project this out into the future with so many variables out there. I think that in, in general, having a conversation about the, the overall challenge, um, how we got here, um, as not only a city, but as a state, um, where all these different agencies did this, i- is absolutely a, a, a fair, um, way to, to approach this. But I mean, are you specifically asking for on April 2001, um, the Glendale City Council adopted a resolution or, or a, a, a motion that did X, Y, or Z? That level of detail, I think, i- is, is, is a bit beyond what the rest of this committee really wants to delve into.
Well, yeah. May I answer that? Um, yeah, that would be, yeah, that's kind of a strong argument. Give me the answer and then address it, uh, as, as you will. No, I'm addressing the following question. If we, for example, we're going to consider, uh, pension obligation bonds. Let's say whether it be 600 million, a billion, or we go even further, right? We are incurring, would be incurring a significant debt to the city that is on top of all the other obligations, and those are calculated out. And so I requested that we have as a perspective, the total unfunded, um, or accrued, should deferred, uh, infrastructure costs, right? That have a number, whether the number is 400 or $500 million is an important number to consider because that means that not only do we have to fund, uh, those deferred, uh, capital improvement, uh, needs, but we also need to fulfill the needs of all of the other obligation bonds that we have, plus any other long-term liabilities. The combination of all of those gives us a picture as to where Glendale is today, right? So that the city council can determine, oh, we already have commitments to, let's say, a billion dollars. And on top of that, we'd have to be adding this other P O B. That's what I'm referring to. So it has to do with the current state of the city and, and perhaps a way of addressing that. And I submitted several questions with regard to that. So it has to do with the current state of the city and perhaps a way of addressing that. And I submitted several questions with regard to that.
Yeah, that's that's fair enough, and I'm not going to take over the conversation here, other than to maybe say one final thing. Which is that I think that some of the, I I think maybe this comes down to what you referred to earlier as a conceptual misunderstanding. I know you've asked for a list of deferred maintenance, as you put it, or deferred C I P projects. And how pension obligations or this particular liability impacts that. And you've asked for a list of those deferred C I P projects, except for the fact that we can't provide you one. Because it doesn't exist. There is no deferred C I P project list. So to to say that we have X number of million dollars in deferred C I P. And therefore, these obligations are going to impact those. That's the kind of calculation that we can't we can't make.
Okay, I have just one more comment. Mr. Holtzman and Mr. Tactalian. In twenty sixteen, I believe. The Glendale Water and Power created a capital improvement program. And that extended for about ten years. A capital improvement program, I believe, was calling for a a city's annual expenditure of seventy million dollars for capital improvement. The and I believe that for public works, we will also have a similar type of number that says these are the requirements. But if we take a look, what was actually spent, which was substantially less than that, we have to ask the question, why? And it is my conjecture that the reason why the city was is in the have all this capital improvement needs that have not been met. Is because the increases in the pension payments and the pension liability have impacted it negatively. And that's where I want to make the part of the presentation relevant. I want to make it relevant that the decisions that we are recommending. Right are in light of all the citywide obligations that we we need to put it in, that we need to put in context.
But that's an overly simplistic way of looking at things, because when you refer to the G W P list of projects or the public works list of projects or the parks list of projects. The only way that that pension obligations would have impacted those is if you were only using general fund dollars to pay for those projects. The fact of the matter is, G W P uses their enterprise funds to pay for those projects. Parks are oftentimes funded through Proposition eighty four or other variety of revenue sources. Public Works projects are most often funded through grants and gas tax dollars. So to to look at just a project list and look at millions of dollars and say, these didn't get done because the general fund had this particular obligation. Isn't an apples to apples comparison, and that's where this gets really challenging. If if we were dealing with only general fund dollars going into building out projects. And we decided not to do that and pay for pensions instead, I could see that argument. But that's just not the case.
I want to add maybe a couple, one more thing. I won't be long. The the implications of of your observations right now is something that I can tackle, but maybe this is not the place to do it. But I will, nonetheless, I'll give you an answer to that.
Mr. Marion. Sorry, you've been very patient.
No worries. Yeah, and in light of, you know, this conversation, I think I would be very. Reluctant to have committee members simply uploading whatever they wanted. Onto that site, especially if. They take information and create their own kind of presentations out of it. Because, you know, obviously, the committee members. In looking at the information that they have access to, both in that database and generally, you know. Whether it's the city's website or any other source of information that they want to look at. The committee members are all sophisticated people who have the ability to vet that information based upon its source. Based upon their experience, based upon, you know, their expertise. And if they have questions, they can reach out to you directly or ask questions of staff. If we're to have committee members simply uploading voluminous documents and then providing, you know. And and I I think I mentioned this in the past. You know, there there should be some summarization of what we're looking at, just putting, you know, a two hundred and fifty page. You know, contract and saying like, review this. And that, you know, if you don't review this, you're not doing your job as a committee member. It's kind of absurd, because, you know, each committee member is able to. Use their best judgment, which is why we were appointed. By various council members in order to evaluate. What information is important to look at? The level of detail to which it's necessary to look at said information, given. You know, the opinions that we might have on, you know, what the outcomes look like. And if we have any questions, we have the ability to to have those questions answered by. You know, staff by simply emailing our questions to you directly. So I I'm not, I I'd be reluctant to just open up that database and have it. You know, just allowing, you know, all sorts of. All sorts of information to be dumped in there, because also the volume of information, you know, more is not better. You know, I I can take every single meeting agenda and video and. From the city of Glendale's archives from two thousand and one until until the last one and dump it on there and say, hey, this is all important, please review it. And it's not really something that is helpful. I can also take information that I get from CAFRA that's, you know, two years old. And put that into, you know, a chart. And if it's not vetted, that that chart could be extremely misleading. And so, you know, while I am confident that the committee members can. You know, have the ability to discern the quality of of that that type of information. I don't think it's necessary to even take that risk. Just filter it through, you know, staff or yourself. I I don't think that's that's an issue, and I don't think that's cumbersome at all. Thank you.
Mr. Holtzman, I've, may I? I want to. I want to at least clarify to the committee members a practice that I have seen used in the past. Which I think we all should be aware of. And and that's the the sheer large number of fallacies that oftentimes come into an argument. But it's great for a debate, but it's not really cogent for the type of things we're trying to do here. No one is suggesting that there be a two hundred page dump on anything. And I don't think anyone has ever done that. No one suggests that we take videos for the last twenty years and just dump them in there. That's the. It is, it's called a strong argument. And it's invalid here because none of that exists. So then to argue, to present it, and then to argue against it. Is a fallacy that we should not tolerate. Yeah, but the idea of presenting relevant documents, summaries. Or presenting a document that needs additional clarification for the input and evaluation of the of the numbers, that's relevant. So I just want to make sure that we be on the lookout for logical fallacies, and this is one of them. And I don't particularly appreciate that. Thank you.
John, I think you're muted.
Sorry, we have all these sirens out here. I keep turning it off. As I understand it, John, I think we have managed the upload into this. I don't think we've opened it. And and I I'm not in favor of opening it, not not for any, you know, very deep reason other than, you know. We want it to be managed and 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 organized the way we want it organized and all of that. So I think that, you know, Mr. Milano. You know, if you get us whatever you want to put in, we'll put it in. So, all right. So John recommended a timing that I kind of like. It's a little different than what I had thought of, but I think it's good. Which is that we spend the next two meetings refining. The the recommendations and then one on the final draft, and I think that actually makes. A lot of sense. I'm good with it if you guys are good with it, gals, guys. Right? Show of hands? Good. Okay, good. All right. So we got that underway. We have the other stuff we talked about. Is there anything else that we need to cover?
Do we need a formalized, Mr. Holtzman, this is Mr. Marion, do we need a formalized? You know, motion on what what that's going to look like, that process?
Well, let's do it. I I think the answer is no, we don't need one, but but I I think it might be a good idea for me to. See if I can restate it all. The. So the motion, actually, see if the city attorney, Mike, is there. I don't know whether he's been paying attention, but.
Well, and 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 maybe maybe if we're going to do two meetings, just and I just want to top this out just so that. It flushes out this this potential motion and that there are no misunderstandings here. I I think good boundaries obviously create better outcomes, and it's a good process. So. If we're going to have two meetings in order to discuss, to have committee members give their input. I believe maybe the first meeting should allow. You know, again, I'm I'm open to it, but let's say five minutes per committee member in order to give their opinions. Up until this point of what they think, you know, any statement, questions that they might have. The that five minutes is their five minutes to use as they wish. And the feedback that we got from this executive committee, as I heard it, was to allow that five minutes. For each committee member without any type of rebuttal or question or, you know, commentary on. What was included in that in those in that five minutes? Following that, I believe there's going to be an opportunity for you then to take that information. And put together some sort of framework or preliminary, you know, report. That a draft, as it were, that would then, you know, allow the committee members to come back. With that information in place and give maybe another three to five minutes of what their thoughts are. So that then we can form that final. Draft report for the final meeting that Mr. Tukalian mentioned. So. If if anybody, if I if I've mentioned anything that or or failed to mention anything, please, you know, feel free to add on to that.
Well, let me let me make, I I slightly understood it differently, so I'm glad we're having this conversation. I was going to provide this outline before we have the next meeting. And the reason in part is we wanted to provide a comfort level. For some folks who may not be quite as conversant or involved or whatever to look at stuff and go, okay, yeah, I agree with this, I disagree with that. It gives people a framework if they need it, right? And I was going to provide pro and con. On that with the with the, you know, by the way, clear caveat that you, you know. Well, some of these pros and cons are coming straight from what people have said, but on the other hand, I don't want. I don't want I don't want to play too too big a role here in terms of anybody taking this, you know, that's just giving people what we've heard, kind of, you know, and. So I was going to do that. Then we give the people the five minutes. The I I guess what I was thinking about for the meeting, second meeting, I'm not quite sure. I mean, I partly want to see what happened in the first meeting, but. But, you know, my thought would be to see how much consensus emerges from that first meeting. And then create what I'll call a consensus document for the second meeting. Which would look a lot like the first document, except with the input of 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 the the members. At which point, after that meeting, I would go and and write pros, basically. Everything will be a bullet point up to that point. Because, you know, the the issue is obviously. How we choose to go depend, you know, I'm going to spend my pros on things that matter. And and I don't want to, you know, spend a lot of time writing things. I mean, as to the things we reject, I think it's important that we explain why we reject them. But I don't want to waste a ton of ink on things we're rejecting, because I think people are really looking for what did you accept, not what did you reject? But it's helpful as a record, I think, to know that we did consider X and Y and Z and that we we didn't. You know, we didn't do it. And then the other piece talked about. Which I need to give a little more thought to, to tell you the truth, is is how we identify this. You know, the the sort of what is, how bad is the problem piece, you know, going in on the front end of this. And there is some judgment. There are judgment calls there too for the committee, really. I mean, it's it it it's not a very deep spectrum, but I think the committee is divided. Probably, I'm just guessing, just between thinking, I I don't think there's anybody on the committee who doesn't think pension costs are a problem. If they're if they are, they probably chose the wrong committee to be on. The but but there's a spectrum of views lead going from, we got it under control. We're doing everything right, kind of, or whatever, to, you know. Let's declare bankruptcy, basically. I mean, we have a pretty good spectrum on the committee, if you think about it. I might be going a little too far with the let's declare bankruptcy, but we have, you know. I know one member of the committee at least certainly thinks we should get out of CalPERS. You know, no matter what, basically. So there's some very strong views there. So anyway, so so that's the other piece. I haven't quite figured out how to. But I think I I think. I think there was a suggestion, I think, from Ms. Finch, that I do something. To gauge that as well, that that's part of the outline of what we'd like to hear from people, I think, when. When they speak is, you know, tell me, you know, tell me what you see as the problem. You know, or how severe you see the problem as being or whatever, and tell me what do you think of these solutions? Mr. Michaels and Mr. Milano.
I'm glad that we did get to the timeline as part of this agenda. To that end, if we're looking at three meetings, I'm going to ask you, Mr. Holtzman, what you. What your timeframe is to be able to digest the feedback that you might get. I do want to hear from people. I think five minutes might be a little long for many people. And long for the committee to get through, depending on the level of detail that you're putting out in. That initial bullet point list of ideas to discuss. So as far as moving forward, looking towards a motion. Towards the that item on the towards the timeline agenda item. I would say three to five minutes, depending on the level of detail that you're able to put out initially. And then I'd be asking you, once you have that, how much time would you want to digest that before writing the report? And as you say, investing time in probes. Do you want to have that be two weeks? Would you want? Time with that?
What I would like, at whatever point it is, is then turned over to me to write, right? I would like four weeks. The now, that having been said. I'm realizing there there's a lot I could probably get started on. I mean, so I'm not, I'm not firm on that, but that would that would be my ask.
But I'm talking about timing for that intermediate step between what we're talking about, this initial meeting.
Oh, I think we just need then. Okay, this is fine for that. That's, I mean, honestly, it doesn't, it's not going to take that long. I mean, I I there, I mean, we know what the there, I mean, who knows, there could be another option or two, but there aren't going to be a million new options, so. I feel fine with two weeks. I just want four weeks for the actual report.
I just wanted to get that timeline from you. Thank you. Mr. Milano.
Thank you. I would like to suggest that maybe the meeting following. The meeting where the members get to opine on their perception of the problem and the solutions. That we have one where we are able to ask the staff pertinent questions with regard to many of the issues that were presented to us this year. I think that there were many troubling issues. I think that there were many uh troubling issues that will impact significantly what solutions we make about. And uh, and I will have, I think I have plenty of questions to ask. The director of finance and the assistant city manager or the deputy city manager. Uh, and uh, and the city attorney. At the minimum, I'll have several questions to make sure that I, the perceptions that I have are clarified. And if we read those documents from this year, from the presentations we had. I think that many of the other committee members probably have similar uh or questions that they have. That are probably troubling them or that are un- or issues that are unclear. So I'm suggesting that we reserve at least part of a meeting for the purpose of clarifying those topics from this year. And to ask the staff pertinent questions.
Well, I I think um the way we've talked about it. Uh, the 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 people, the the spiel, so to speak, from the members, probably only lasts an hour. Um, so it gives us about an hour on the back end of the meeting, the next meeting. Uh, but my thought would be two things, um, I I think it would make a good question time. Uh, and I think the questions, you know, in my mind could go in any direction, because, you know, bear in mind, somebody may say something, everybody goes, oh, that's really interesting, tell me more. Uh, you know, so I I, some of those questions might be directed at other members, uh, you know, about, well, what about this, what about that? But the one thing I would ask. Is that all questions be true questions? That they not be started with a statement. Uh, because there are two reasons for that, one is the one we've talked about forever. But the other i- is the people who stayed quiet, I I don't, I don't want them to be intimidated by other folks. And I'm not, I'm not saying intimidated in a bad way, I just mean. I I I feel like we want to encourage people to speak here, and I think that if folks are too. You know, aggressive in their approach with those folks, that 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 we might not hear some good ideas we want to hear.
John, I think that if you, like, if we started, like, if. I'm just gonna pick on Joe Palos, like, if he gave his opinion about something. And I started asking him specific questions about things, I think that that might deter people.
Okay.
Who haven't really, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Openly had, you know, expressed their opinions um from really, you know, um. Deter them from really giving them a their honest, you know, or to get their opinion, right, or to continue on that conversation. I think that if there are additional questions, I think they should maybe come from you. And so that way it gives each committee member the ability to, you know, because you're, you're, you know, you were hired as our consultant to walk us through this for a reason. And so you're the one who's gonna be able to understand what someone's trying to say. And so if there's like a clarifying question to make sure that you understand it correctly for the report, I think it's appropriate that they come from you. Um, and so that way it doesn't deter somebody um from getting lost maybe in their in their comment or opinion. And that way you have a clear um response that you need from each of the committee members um for your, for the report.
I'm happy to do that, and we can um have the questions go through Luke and then he can feed them to me, because, you know, as people probably have figured out. I'm a little, I have a little trouble multitasking, so, uh, the screen, so that would work, that makes sense to me, Mr. Milano.
Yeah, I think that by now we all have a pretty good idea. Of what are the relevant questions that we need to ask. Um, I don't particularly would like to have my questions filtered out. And I could re, you know, I could keep my questions to a question, after all, that is the probably the best exercise. I think I've done enough background uh information, so sometimes you need to put it in context, but we're now at the stage where we can simply ask the question. So I would prefer not to have my comments be filtered out. Thank you.
I thought that we had discussed earlier about as far as people giving their opinions. Of just running through all the opinions without questions.
Oh, yeah, no, when when I'm talking about questions, I'm talking about the second hour.
Okay.
I'm not, I I I think we all agree, we're gonna go through, you know, I mean, what order, I don't know, I'll do Alpha or something like that, but, uh, you know. And that there will be no rebuttals uh by anybody else, it's just, you know, Ms. Finch, then Mr. Marion, then, you know, we just. Boom, 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 no, no responses. Did that make sense? I'm sorry, I feel like I shut you up.
No, that's exactly what I thought, I just misunderstood what Ms. Finch was saying, I thought she was talking about.
No, I I don't want any. I don't want any direct questions during that hour at all. Uh, the, I think, I think, I think Ms. Finch has got her finger on the pulse in a way that I don't. And understanding there are people who probably are a little reluctant to speak.
Couldn't agree more on that one.
Okay, um. I, anything else for the good of the order? All right, I think, uh, Vlad, uh, we're ready for the uh benediction.
Item number four, reports information only, I do not believe we have any reports. Item five, request for items on future agendas, I'm not sure if we have anything.
We we essentially have been discussing that all day, so.
Okay, wonderful, then item number six, adjournment, please have a motion and second to adjourn.
Hang on a sec, we have a hand up, Mr. Milano.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, concerning the um, the information that I sent to you via email, if you could.
Yes.
Please uh submit that and send it out to the rest of the members.
Okay, yes, uh, Mr. Tactalian, you you have a copy of it as well, your copy.
I do. Also, uh, just in light of making sure that the public can participate. Because I didn't see it on the agenda, I don't know if it's necessary for um this meeting. But uh, are there any, are there any public calls or or comments?
Good point.
Uh, we do not have any callers.
Thank you, though. Okay, let's try that again, Vlad.
Okay, item number six, adjournment, and may I please have a motion and second to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm adjourned at two forty P M, have a great afternoon, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.